Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, August 11, 2022. Meeting at this time, I'll call the meeting order. I have an adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Been moved in second, will you say hi?
Hi.
Any days. Is John there yet? Are we sitting, John? He said he might be running soon. Yeah. Well, we're gonna get moving, because you guys know a lot to talk about. Is there anything in the beginning of the? We're gonna talk about the capital improvement plan. Public Works Director Jeff is gonna take over. Is there anything at the very beginning that John could miss that would be rich for him?
ADA grants maybe? Just.
The ones for the pigs.
Yeah, whatever. I just was thinking that that's something if we get started, be pretty easily.
Hi, John.
You're muted.
Hello.
Yeah. Yeah.
Clearly, I never knew that.
Thank you, Mr. Matt. Thank you, Colonel Rivers. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the 2023 and 24 capital improvements plan. Again, should have a lively discussion about that. Before we get into that, I did want to talk a little bit about public work structure. I know we had a restructuring a few months ago. And again, let's see that. We've got basically three branches that we've got. The endemarian branch, which is Andy Sylvia and an open position at this point that are building division. And then also our field crews, then we've got Cory Roach doing environmental sustainability portion of our our efforts. And if you go to the next slide, please. And when we focus on capital improvements, what we're looking at is that structure right there on the left-hand side, which is at this point, myself as well as Andy Sylvia. Again, we do have that open position. So as we go through this capital improvements plan, we just need to keep in mind that the structure that we have in public works right now is really limited. We do have a very small staff to bring these projects to fruition and keep things moving. So again, just ask to keep that in mind as we, as we go through this. Some of the considerations that we did have as we were going through the CIP process here. Keeping in mind that we have barely in budget the past couple of years. Obviously, with COVID, it's been very, very tough for us. And then we're still dealing with some of the effects of COVID and how that's dealt with absences and as well as other things in the environment. Costs of goods and services. As we've seen, inflation is high, it's coming down a little bit. But again, we've been struck with low expenses that are much higher than we ever could have imagined. Personnel turnover, that's an important thing that we need to look at also. We've got a lot of relatively new staff members in our, in our group. So we've got a learning curve to go through. In line with that is a tight labor market. We do have that open position as a project manager. So we are struggling to find someone to fill that as of now. And then permanent capacity and that kind of ties in with the fact that we do have a such a small, small number of folks working on the capital project. So again, just keep, keep those, those things in mind as we go through this. So basically, what I'm asking to do is just kind of hit the reset button on a lot of things that we're looking at in our capital plan. Keep that in mind, again, we do have a small group, we do have a small budget. We just need to keep that in mind as far as as going through and see that we do have a number of items that are in the CIP that are specifically towards kind of kind of regrouping from where we were a number of years ago, when we did have established folks that were here. And again, with our small, small group of folks to do the work. We just kind of need to kind of take a step back and make sure we're doing the right thing for the right reason. So the core objectives in the CIP is, is to make, make sure that we live up to our obligations and limits that we've made as far as our projects concerned. Do a lot, do some planning to make sure that we are doing the right thing. And make sure that we are addressing the significant improvements that we need to make, such as the ground about and culverts. And then not forgetting about our maintenance group, making sure that we're good maintenance on, on our infrastructure with, with the limited resources that we do have. Excellent. So when we start looking at the 2023 CIP, again, I think you all have a copy of this prior to, and it's also a copy here. In the room here. Just kind of briefly going through some of the items that we do have. Sorry, we've got, we just kind of get a ramble to this. We do have 18 line items within, within the CIP for 2023. And that encompasses 14 different projects. On the top of the right-hand side, you do have the funds that are associated with each of the budgets that are allocated for those different items. And on the right-hand column, that's in the light brown, those are the grants and other funds that we have from outside resources that are identified there. And that's, again, that's a big part of our budget that we do have. Again, on the left-hand side, again, it's broken down by the different, five different categories. You've got facilities, parks, transportation, sewer, and then surface water. And we'd start looking, if we just kind of go line by line, city hall facilities, we're looking at capacity of $225,000 budget on that. That's gonna take care of a lot of the carpet painting, some of the HVAC system issues that we have. So that's kind of what, what that's allocated for. And I believe you all have the individual detailed sheets for these nine items. So the Parks Master Plan, one of the things I did mention in, in the previous core values or core items I need to look forward to is planning. And you'll see a number of items that are associated with planning. First one is gonna be the Parks Master Plan, as well as Lakefront Property Development. Those two items, we need to really take a look at putting a good plan together and building upon the other, the other plans that we have within the city. And make sure that we're doing the right thing. As move on, that's transportation. We do have our annual overlay program. Typically, we spend about 400,000. We do have the obligation to do the ADA compliant ramps that are usually associated with that. Some years we may have more or less ramps. And if we have less than, we can certainly do more, more paving. So we've allocated $200,000 for each of those items, which is our typical $400,000 tax money. Item six is the State Streets. We've allocated $50,000, that's kind of our typical run rate for that. That takes care of the small issues that, that come up. Whether it be a radar, speed radar sign or those sorts of things. The next three items are related to the roundabout. We broke that down into three different categories, design, right away acquisition, as well as construction. And you can see the numbers there, most of that is grant funded. So we've got three, three different grants on that. And the I should mention, everything that's in bold in the white columns is funded through city funds already. The brown is all grants, as I mentioned earlier. And the light green is, those are funds that are not. Those are projects that are unfunded, or those portions of the projects are unfunded. The 10th item that we're looking at in sewer group is the sewer master plan. Again, going back to the idea that we need to really reevaluate what we have for our system, as well as ultimately lead to it, to develop an asset management. So we can understand where our assets are, what the conditions of those assets are. And then we can put a plan going forward from there for a long-term, long-term process.
Jeff, can I answer briefly? So when you say a master plan, whether it's for parks or sewer, are you assuming that includes like asset management? Kind of maintenance schedules?
That would be the development of what the assets are and the conditions. And then from that, we would internally develop what a plan would be.
I just, I just was checking whether that was a component of it. Because I, it's the definition of what's a master plan that I was. Okay, thanks.
Again, so that's, that's the sewer master plan. And then again, we'll, we'll move on to the next category, which is the surface water. See, there's a number of items in the surface water, starting with the master plan. And that is one of those items that we just need better information on what our assets are and what their conditions are. Now, longstanding item numbers 12 is materials bin covers. They are, please stop laughing. That.
That's actually transport lighting.
Yeah. So we are, we are going to move forward with that. We do have the design plans from eight years ago, 10 years ago, whatever it was. So we will, we will re-ingregate that. And again, we've got a small amount there to look at, look at the design, make sure that everything is still competent to, to move forward. And, and 2024, we expect to actually build the, the covers. The next three items all relate to the L90 cover replacement. Again, design right away, acquisition, construction. Again, a good portion of that is covered with the grants. However, we do have a little over a million dollars. Yeah, a little over a million dollars, that's needs to be. Sorry.
Twenty-four.
That's, that's why, thank you. It's in 24.
So. I had one thing. Right here, just to go back to the point you just said, the, the light green, those are unfunded. What we mean by that is the surface water, at least below the line, everything in blue is surface water, really. That fund does not have sufficient funds to do any of these projects. So when you give the mayor's proposed budget, it may include some funding options for some of these projects. I don't want you to go in thinking that when we get to the mayor's proposed budget, we're gonna give you all of these unfunded projects, I could say. There's a wish list, we'd love to do this, yet we have no solution. And so as we work through the budget process for the mayor's budget between now and September 8, we're looking at how could we, what kind of proposals could we give you? What kind of auctions could we give you to fund these? Because that fund just supports this project. So just, this isn't pie in the sky, it's just that this early in the budget process, we don't have, haven't nailed down just yet.
So after L90, we've got the Stromps will work on 35th Avenue, that's, that's needs to take place, and that's about a million dollar project. I'm 17, is a, at 95th and boundary. That's a cover replacement, we're gonna work with Shoreline on that. They have a larger program that they're working on with the core. And with that, that's the beginning of that. So we'll see a small expense with, with the work with, with the state. And then, and next year, we'll do a little bit more funding with those folks for the design. And then in '27 is when that cover replacement is expected to take place. So it's, that's, it's a big project that they're working on. Again, that's, that's a large, large project.
I just thought about that. So, so when we're working with Shoreline and Yonkor, that is in fact right the grant, getting the funding to do the project? Is that what we're hoping for?
Shoreline has taken a lead on that, so they will, they will do the lion's share of the work.
And so the 10,000 here, do we need to write our own grant for that? Or is that, that's wrapped into what Shoreline's doing?
That, that it does, just a straight, straight cost. That we need to, that's just a straight cost that we have to expense. It's for, it's for, to get the leave the process going with the state. And that's our, our share of that.
One more question. Looking at the difference on the material bin covers, which I was not around for. So I thought, oh, that amusement, where the amusement comes from. Are, are we saying that to actually install those is $250,000?
That's our best guess.
That's our best guess.
Yes.
Wow.
I gotta say one thing about that. I laughed because it's been talked about forever. But what I find amusing is we're gonna go and cover up material that when it snows, we go take that material and then we go spread it around on all roads. So I just kind of wonder why we have to cover it, but then, because that's the law, right? But it is funny, we're covering.
We can't use tards. I just, 250,000 seem like a lot, but everything costs a lot these days. So I just wanted to ask whether I had the right interpretation.
We're ever hopeful that it won't be that, but
Okay.
that is our conservative. Laura, to your point about not knowing what amusement is about, it actually creates all of us. Where the amusement arrives. There's no person in this room that is around when this was started.
Well, we're gonna get. We're gonna get lifetime guaranteed covers for this house, hopefully. Jeff, was that, are those the kind of covers that need to be fire protection brought? Is it big enough that it needs that, or are we under that threshold?
I don't think it would need fire protection. They're gonna be substantially higher, because they do need to load and unload materials in those facilities, so. They would, they will be lighting.
Maybe Sky Nursery has some surplus. We have a question on them. Sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Um, it seems like the opportunity to pile on to the material bin covers.
I am sorry, I apologize.
No, it's, um, it's an opportunity to understand is, if it's required, why have we not done it? And if it's not required, why are we doing it? Because I would think that if it's required, we would have done it. Or is this just a nice to have?
It is a requirement.
So if it's a requirement, is there an obligation to have done it in a certain time? Or is there a penalty for not doing it?
That is a great question, John. I would think at some point, that could become a problem, to say that.
Well, we've gone this long.
Oh, yeah. It is, it is part of the MPDS permit and everything, all that work that we're doing, making the effort. So I think at this point in time, that we're moving towards that effort. This is something that we're leading the charge of trying to clean up stormwater around the city. This is probably something that needs to burn out. Although, but you're right, it has not occurred in the past.
Okay.
And then final item is my creek restoration, that is coming direction for 2024. So we can skip on to the next slide. All right, we see a lot of the same numbers from from 2023, a lot of those things are fairly problematic. Including the city hall facilities, again, that's, city hall is 20, 21 years old now or so. So it's, it's starting to show its age again, it needs a lot of upkeep. And then the other things that we do see is, again, we'll have our annual overlay program with the data ramps. Also, the early action investments with the State Street study.
Sorry, raise my hand again. So for the city hall facilities improvements, do we have any prospect of using ARPA funds for some portion of those? I realize we'll know when we see the mayor's budget, but.
I mean, you took those funds, it's lost revenue.
Right.
So you can basically spend those however you wish.
Okay, thank you. There seemed to be a good potential connection, so I was just checking, thank you.
And as you can see, the 2024 is a little bit, actually, it's about half the, the budget of 2023. So 23 is, is certainly the heavier of the two lifts. But again, we'll continue with our sewer master plan, making sure that we're, again, capturing all the information that we need to make better decisions going forward. And again, create a long-term CIP that meets our, our needs, as well as our, it's our budget. Again, tackle the, the right things at the right time. Again, next line is also the surface water master plan, same, I'm sorry. Surface water man, surface water master plan, that's just carrying on over the previous. And then council member Cody, this is yours for number 12, material bins covers. That's.
I'm coming to like them. Meaning a good old fashioned barn raid to get that done.
And then, again, the next three items are related to L90, which is actually the introduction of that, that culvert. You can see that we do have grant funding towards that value of $850,000. But we do have a remainder of about 1.5 million that will be needed. And then the final two items are, again, 195th and SR104, that culvert, again, that's the joint program with Shoreline. We figure probably $150,000 to get the design going with, with those folks. And then also line creek restoration, we need to do a better job of restoring those, those areas that we require to do so. And after that, there'll be some maintenance going forward on an annual basis. But again, the, the big haul is gonna be to get that restored.
Well, the restoration maintenance is carried separately, or or just another parks maintenance, once we get through kind of this initial?
Yeah, that, that'll probably be an outsourced project for, for consumption or last one.
Like the ongoing, like after we get this restoration done, regular maintenance on that area to basics and stuff, is that just being our parks, rest, first maintenance fund?
Yeah, parks or the surface water. Yeah. So again, I go back to the, the four major groups that we have for the projects. And as you can see, the obligated or committed, which are the ones that are probably the higher priority. When we start talking about budget, see, what is the material bin covers? Again, that's NPDS requirement. The storm drain reconstruction on 35th Avenue. That's, that's another one, as well as the 195th and SR104. We do have to bring up Shoreline to actuate those, those projects with them, or those different elements with them. And then line creek restoration, again, that's the, those are the four that would be the main projects that, again, we'd either committed to or have obligations for. As mentioned, planning is gonna be an important part for the next two years. We have parks, we've got the lakefront property, sewer master plan, the surface water master plan. So again, those are very, very critical. Again, to, to get to a point where we're gonna have a solid asset management and creating a good CIP for the long term. And significant activities of that listed there, again, those are the big, big two get items, the culverts, as well as the roundabout. So those things that really are probably most important to a number of folks. But again, those are the big two get items, we just need Congress to have that.
Jeff, on the big projects, are we anticipating that we're gonna do our own project management? Or we will also have some contractor assistance with project management on those? Because your staff is kind of small right now. So I'm just trying to get an idea, at least with 2023, what you're envisioning.
I would suspect that we would need some consultant help, yes. And the fourth group. There's maintenance, maintenance activities. We don't want to lose sight of the importance of doing ongoing maintenance with our facilities and assets. And that's again, city hall, street overlay programs, the ramps and the early action items. So those are the things that are falling into that category.
Jeff, for the L90, we're no longer trying to sync up with the washout work, is that correct?
No, we are.
We are still trying to.
Yes.
It's important from a timeline standpoint, or otherwise we get disconnected from their work.
Exactly. And the latest information we have is that they're looking to do their culvert in 2024. Not to say that it will.
They're seeing it be like ours.
That is the target that they have at this point.
It's always two years off. In my tenure, anyway.
For washed out engineering. And so for this slide, this just gives you the overall two-year look at everything. Again, you can see the top portion of our, our budget that we have there is mostly funded with city funds already. The bottom section, which is primary, is the surface water. We do have a, a significant shortfall with, in those projects. So that kind of gives you the a very upfront obvious view of where we stand with, with our funds.
Is Cory going to be the liaison for the park elements? Or do you not know yet?
I'm not sure, but I was, I would expect that she would be okay, take a role in that, yes.
Okay. Because there's two big public involvement processes there. One for the Parks Master Plan, which is updating pros. And the other for the Lakefront Property equally. You know, to do both at once is actually complimentary, but the public engagement component is large.
It makes, we're going to be ahead of that. The industry done.
Okay, I, I agree. I just was trying to figure out what your interface is there. And, and Phil, do you anticipate that the Parks and Recreation Board will be working on both of these elements? Because they're small right now.
Certainly, they would be involved. So I mean, when you do a process like this, obviously, we have a consultant involved.
Right.
And that helps with that heavy lift of public engagement. And providing the technical expertise to a small parks board and a small city staff to, to get through that process.
Yeah, okay.
I think they make the most sense to be.
I, I agree, I agree, but we need to.
Meetings, public hearings, whatever. And we have a planning staff who's very adept at going through these processes.
That's true. Back up. Okay. Because they, they will need, they're starting to gel, but they will definitely need a lot of support, but then they'll have opinions. If so. Thank you. About the state, federal, county grant funding. How confident are we in some of those? You know, is this, is this a wish list? Is this, we've kind of already been, it's a mistake. Like, where is this fall?
If it's on that spreadsheet, it is, you have it in here.
It is in.
It is locked in, yes.
I'm sorry. Which, which color are you going for?
The brown. The brown color.
Brown on the right.
So this isn't.
The light green, it's not, it's like a task list for ground preparation, right?
Or for us to find and make a recommendation through the mayor's proposed budget to help fund that.
Okay.
So.
Has there been any sort of investigation to other funding outside, outside funding opportunities? Is that part of what we're dealing right now as well?
We're currently looking and see if there's any other funding, absolutely.
Absolutely.
John.
Thank you. A couple of questions, if I may. What is the process for baselining a project? And when does the city council approve the baseline of a project? By baseline, I mean that's when you, you've determined what the scope, the budget and the schedule is. Not necessarily the funding, but you have what you think is the funding mechanism. But at what point do you say, this is the project that we're gonna do for this cost and this schedule with this scope? And bring that before the council?
Why, that's, I think what you're getting at, John, is it sounds like the process that, that I identified and earlier was, we we did a fire project that we feel is, is needed. And then we look at the budget that we need for that. Then council will take it to council and say, this is, this is the project that we want to to bring forward with, you know, with the design engineer and whatnot, kind of go through that process of redoing it, getting a design engineer, having the, the plans put together. I guess I'm, I'm not quite sure your, when you say baseline, that's.
Baseline is, let's take about Northeast 35th Construction. So we, we think that's a million dollars. But when do you come to us and say, here's the scope that we want to do, and here's the value of it? And here's the schedule for us to deliver that project? When, when do you do that? The, the part of the reason I'm asking is that, you know, you know, if we had baseline the material bins six years ago, and the program was to design and budget that in and construct it in a biennium, then we would have baseline that work and then work would have gotten done within that, within that baseline. Because I, I don't, I don't understand how projects sort of languish and move from one biennium to the next.
Well, John, I'm gonna have a go at responding, and Tom, maybe you could join too. And I'm doing this as a council member who's sat through these budget processes and through the bid process that the city uses. So.
We have to secure funding based on our best estimates first. And then, you know, either city funding or outside funding, and then it goes out. We do scope and the council does get to see that. And then it goes out to bid and then we get to see what the the. Contractors out there have bid the project and then we have to approve the contract and not include the schedule and everything else. So. We as a city don't do the work. Do you see what I'm saying? It's not us that does it. It's the. It's the contractor that we or consultant that we.
Yeah, I think it's fine. I'd like to hear from Director Perrigo, but like on the Northeast Thirty Fifth. At some point, somebody decided that we think the budget should be a million dollars. And what I'm interested in is what what is the scope and is, does that make sense? And when does the council say, go forth with that schedule and that budget?
So as we're going through the design process, which we're going through now, if there was an amount approved to. Get that completed, as they finish their design, they're giving us a scope, they're giving us the cost and they're giving us an estimated. Schedule of time that that would take. Then we need to take that and put that out for bid and council member Castle mentioned. To the contractors who would then. Bid that project and hopefully an engineer's estimate is correct. And they will give us that final scope, not the scope, but. That timeline within that budget and that is what comes before councils to prove that contract. So. In my mind, that's when the council baseline set project is when they're approving. What the contractor is saying, you know, based on your engineer's estimate, here's our bid, it's within. Yes, engineer's estimate scope is what the engineer has put together and here's our schedule to complete this project, so.
But if I could, I conceptually. This is an opportunity to say, you know what? We shouldn't cover the bin. Right? So don't don't do that and have that conversation. So that's conceptually. I think what what council member Passover and our city administrator are saying. Once we we have council kind of alignment through the budget process. On this is something we should try to do and get funds for. Then what they're talking about are the are the next logical steps and. And I think Councilmember Passover is exactly right on kind of and and our city administrator on the sequence of events. But part of this conversation right now is and and, you know, I'm I'm reminded of something that. You know, the the council always makes some adjustments and some additions to the mayor's proposed budget. At least the one time I've been through it, I've seen that. So so. Conceptually, that's what actually what we're doing right now, looking at the proposed budget for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four.
And I think what what John might be thinking, I think, well, how did these original numbers come out before we've had that first run through the design process? And it's really just kind of. I don't know, the engineering is a gut check and we don't oftentimes do the same project type of project over and over again, fill the history of what it should be like, other than like the overlap, right? But this is obviously we're not, it's not our thirteenth time doing material bin cover, so it's still kind of. A guess of best estimate, and that's why we separate the. Design validation before we've been forward with the construction, we barely release it all because we need to have that validation. So where does it come from? It's this experience and kind of a.
And.
Professional judgment.
Right, and we'll do, when we talk to engineers, we'll get estimates on what they feel it's going to cost.
So I'm used to a process that you you can say, okay, I want to budget this. I think the the material bins are going to cost a total of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that's the budget. You you are going to do some level of design and estimating. It might be a thirty percent. And I guess my question is, do you get to the thirty percent stage, which is you've engaged an engineer? And they've come up with a a concept code, they've come up with a thirty percent design. And they say, well, your budget of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is not realistic. It's really going to cost you three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so you can either figure out how to get it back to two seventy or go come to the council and say. I want to baseline the project at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars because. I've done a thirty percent engineering and I've gotten an engineer's estimate and we think it's going to take this amount of time. And so that becomes then the benchmark for how we judge. The success of a project. And and the success being we we get the scope that we think we're going to get and the time and the cost we're going to get. If you wait till you get to the point where you're going out to bid or you've received bids. The the there's not much for the council to do. At that point, it's just, it's just, you know, approve the contract because we've already gone through the phase. I I'm concerned, for example, on the Northeast Thirty Fifth Avenue construction to spend one point one billion dollars. To solve a problem where water is running down a slope. There are lots of different ways to solve the issue of water infiltration running down the slope. And I don't think that we should be spending one point one million dollars to solve that problem.
John, if I may, a couple of thoughts. First of all, I think that to your question and and our colleagues, I think have have very adeptly described some of the nuances of this, but. I also wanted to try and that some of these projects are. Historical in nature and initially Mr. Perrigo and and staff are really have jumped on a very rapidly moving train and we're. When it comes to the Thirty Fifth Street project, that is a very. I think that is probably a very challenging thing for people to estimate what exactly that would be looking like. And I think that the visibility is now starting to become more apparent and that's. You know, from the standpoint of of the C I P plan, for example. My understanding is that because of the changes in staffing, it's been very challenging to get. The the staff to get their arms wrapped around exactly what some of these, whether the estimates were accurate in the past. The other thing that I want to say too, I mean, we see, we see it on, for example, the the roundabout question. And there's inflationary pressures too, but there's also some sort of nuances between different in in previous staff members and present. And I think that different sets of skills and I think that. The last thing I would say is that because these things are of historical nature. Again, the Thirty Fifth Street, there may be variety of solutions. But at the same time, I'm not sure. We're getting that granular as a policymaking body. We're taking the best recommendations from the word the staff and the administration does to bring to us. Proposals and as Consumer Bodhi indicated, this is an opportunity for us to say, well, maybe we don't do the material then covers. I think that to to your, the final thing, let's say, is your question of why some of these seem sort of language over from capital program of a plan for capital. Honestly, I think it's an art, there's been sort of a bit of an artist selective neglect because of lack of resources to actually make it happen in terms of. We just don't have, we've not had the supervisor and professional staff to really handle it. And so material bin covers has, yes, it's a joke. The tennis court lighting was is is a bit of a joke because we've just been hearing about it for so long. But it's also a question of, well, as Councilmember Bodhi said, well, maybe this is a point where we. Very directly say, we are not going to do that this year as council's policymakers would say, you guys have plenty of play, we're going to want you to. Put your attention towards figuring out a better economical solution for the the Thirty Fifth Street issue or or one of these other things. And I and I think it does raise the question. Do we as policymakers want to be more definitive and rather than let sort of. Kind of let things go through a two year process or a one year, even one year process to the budget update. Budget adjustment and say, okay, well, maybe this is working, we need to add more money or cancel this project or table it or whatever else. I I think that there's some. Policy discussions we can have about being sort of direct about what, whether it it does make sense or whether there's enough resources available.
If if I may, you know, I understand what Councilmember Lebo is saying. And I think we can choose to dive a little deeper in the course of this budget review process. And so I do think that it would be fine to pick Northeast Thirty Fifth and say, okay, what? What is, what are the assumptions of of the nature of the work underlying? That one point one million dollars. So. I do think in the budget process, John, it it's it's perfectly okay to inquire more into that and. And find out what our staff has been thinking and if, you know, certainly if there are ways to save money, I think we're all in favor of it. So. Without going completely granular, I completely agree. I just think the, you know, there's option A and option B and we chose the median price between the two or something like that.
There was something to say about that.
Yeah.
And to to the point, I mean, you're right on. So. Just to finish with Thirty Fifth, and then I'll back up to one point. If there are options that are being explored, obviously it's become a lot more expensive than anybody ever anticipated and that's why we're discussing that number. We will be having that discussion in the future as we've discussed with you in the past on this project of what options have been looked at and why we're recommending. The direction that we're recommending at this point in time. And then the council member leave and that will be during this budget process. So we're not asking you to get to the end and approve the number that you don't understand. And then to council members, Lebo's point from earlier is, yeah, we put a number into the C I P and if we got to thirty percent sign in any project. And we could see that the project was going to be totally blown. We're going to come to council and present that. We're going to say this. For whatever reasons that we found, you know, you get in the ground and get into design. The roundabout, you find out that now you've got to put in an underground detention. Facility within the right way, things like that that crop up. We're not just going to keep pushing forward. Finish design and then bring to you say, hey, we're going to go out to bid for two million dollars instead of one million dollars. That's that's not transparent. That's not how we offer it. So just clarify that.
And capital improvement programs, there should be, I I understand, you know, the budget process, but. There should be a point at which there is a baseline for which the council approves. The council's function is not merely policy. The council does have the responsibility to approve the expenditures. And if the expenditures, you need to establish some expectations, not just budget, but that you agree that this is the scope, this is the schedule, this is the. Estimated cost to perform the work. Without that sort of level of approval or expectation. There the projects can languish because there's not that sort of, we need to get it done because that's what we've agreed to do. I mean, one of the first things I noticed when I looked at the capital improvement program. When I started as a council member was I looked at the the schedule for the the north, the fortieth place roundabout. And you know, that that work was going to start this summer and and there is no way that was going to happen. And and that's a recognition that as a new council member, I mean, that's not something that, you know, that should have been. Fertile long before because the work wasn't done, the design wasn't done. So. I I managed much smaller programs and I've managed much larger programs. I mean, the the level of effort here is is not that extraordinary. And.
What did you say? What you just say?
Oh, what I said is I've managed much larger and I've.
Anyway, did you say the level of what is not extraordinary or what did you just say?
I said the level of effort here doesn't seem that extraordinary.
Okay.
When you look at the.
Okay, well.
So I'm I'm offering my observation.
Fine.
If I could add again, we do approve the budget for twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four with the specific elements. So that is a council. Approved budget and then if there are changes, whether it's a delay in the project, brands didn't come in. Bids came in higher, we're going back to the drawing board, then we we do work through. Both discussions of what's going on at the council meetings, but also budget amendments. So we formally approve all of those things and and I get what you're saying, John, which is. To, for greatest efficiency, we should have a budget that we try to live with it. And I do think that that's true of that of of our staff and our team. I'm not. From my experience, that's the the common interest that I've seen. But I so I do understand what you're saying, which is you don't want to have such a moving target. That any price that comes in from your going out to bid is somehow has to be validated. So. I I get that, but I I just want to say there are checks and balances, I think, all along the way.
Yeah, I I just a finer point on it. I think that what Mr. Gil in in says that they're not. The staff is not spitballing a number here and just saying, here's, please approve this. There is going to be granularity in the budget process and and. In in my mind, it seems like we've certain points, we've actually had choices when it came to capital projects where. You can go here, you can do the full meal deal, or you can do it on a very limited basis to just bandage the problem. Or or et cetera. And there's been, there have been plenty of times I can recall where we have. Said, wait a minute, this investment is actually not enough because while you're in there, let's let's also take care of this issue or this improvement because it makes sense. From an economic standpoint, I mean, the overlay program, for example. Little bit different. I'm comparing apples to cinder blocks here, but the overlay program. We had originally budgeted four hundred thousand dollars a year and there was a a point where. Staff came to us and said, we have this incredible opportunity to buy basically asphalt futures. You've heard this story before and I think. That's one of those places where it saves us a tremendous amount of money too. So. I certainly understand your 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 perspective, John, from, you know, from the project management side side of it and and I think. It is absolutely the right places as Councilmember Bodhi indicated for us to ask the questions about. You know, each of these programs as we go through the budget process and make adjustments as as necessary and. You know, when it comes to the 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 aspects of project management, I expect those to, you know, the scope and the cost and everything to be included. And the timeframe to be included within that, that those, you know. Hard to describe exactly. Each of those programs that are being created or those projects are being created and more than that. And and I think the staff has done a very good job of that in the past.
So if we're asked to approve one point one million dollars for the Northeast Thirty Fifth, will we see a scope and a schedule?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we'll we'll get, we will get from the engineer, we'll get cost estimates at thirty percent, sixty percent, and we'll see where where things are trending.
No, no, no. When we approve, if we're asked to approve a budget for one point one million dollars, will we see the 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 scope and the and the proposed schedule for the? For that work?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Well, I don't think you will because we haven't had the, we haven't got the money to even look at that yet. We had. I don't know really how to put this. I have to put a budget together that is balanced. We get the best information we can to give you guys an idea what we're up against. You guys can go in and do whatever you want, but once done, it's got to be budget and you're going to see that we don't have any money. So when anything you want to take away from. You're going to have to take, you want to put something somewhere, you have to take it away from somewhere. You guys can do all you want. I have one person there, I got a city administrator and we got him. We're doing the best we can and I can tell you, I can't spend more than fifty thousand dollars without you people. Figuring it out. I cannot do that. You guys have to approve everything I do. We have to do what we can with what we have. When we done, fine, I am, you know, and I don't, I get a little irritated because, you know. We had two years of COVID. What'd you do for two years? Did you go out of your house? Did you go and come and do all the stuff that people do? I mean, we really, they've worked their butts off just to keep the city afloat and that's what we're trying to do. We have to give you guys something. That's what we have to do. That's what I do. They work their tails off to try to come up with the best thing they can to give you something to look at. And so we all have an idea. The bin coverage is being taken way out of proportion because, to be honest, twelve years ago. We weren't, you know, I wasn't Frank Zank. I wasn't anybody. I had some guy who ran for council like Tom. And when we got elected, nobody cared about them. We just carried on and we brought it up. But every year, it's like they say, where's the thing that we don't have the money for? And you know, then some year you think you might have the money, but then we had a big snowstorm. So we had to take all this money to buy salt. If we had, if we were the University of Washington and had money coming from everywhere, that'd be great, but we're not. We're one little city that can't get any tax money. We don't have the money to move money around. So we're doing the best we can. We're going so deep into this stuff, but I we have to, I have to start with something. I guess if you guys want to give me a million dollars to go out and figure out every one of these projects, exactly what they're going to be. That will be fine. The next year, let's plan on that, given the mayor a million dollars to figure out exactly what everything's going to be in the budget. that will be fine. The next year, let's plan on that, given the mayor a million dollars to figure out exactly what everything's going to be in the budget. Because we don't have the manpower to do what you're asking. We just have to get an idea for you. Do we want to move forward? And if we want to move forward, you have to say, okay. If you guys don't want to do it, that's fine. You're the council, but I have to give you something to start with. And this is the best we can do at this time. And I can't, I have to stand up for these guys. I know how hard they've worked. He's been here every day for, he came in, you know, he had no clue what he got into. He didn't. And we don't, we didn't know either. Well. But, you know, when I hired Phil, we have learned so.
Well, yeah. Well, the night is young.
But yeah, but I know how much is going into this, but how important it is for Lindsay to make sure how much we're thinking about every single thing. I, we've sat in here and talked about the budget. It is not easy. I want to keep this city going, and I'm really, really proud of what we accomplished during COVID and everything, because it's not hard. And I got to give credit to the people that made it through that. So. John, I will do whatever you want. And if you have better ideas, and when you go and when you come up with the project and we say it's going to be this much, if you can show me that you can do it half the price, I'm all in. But you better, you got to show me it. And somebody needs to show me what this thing is. I don't care. I'll take help from anybody. I will take, you know, anybody in the city, anybody in the world that wants to come and say, we can save you a million dollars. Come in and save me a million dollars. But you better show me exactly how you do it. Because I can't guess on this budget. I have to go and say, this is going to bring in the council. We got to start somewhere. And that's all I am. I just, we're going to start with it, and you guys can do whatever you want, but we got to start somewhere. This is by our assessment, this is the closest we can come. And that thirty-fifth project, unless you've been in all the meetings that have been going on about that, that has gotten, there are different options. And you guys will know every option, but none of whom seem to be cheap. They're all expensive. And that's, and that's one of those things that we have to do. Because we've been, you know, we are mandated pretty much to do that through, uh, your court decisions. So that one we have to figure out, but it's not an easy thing. I mean, it's just, I just wish things would be easy, but they're not. So just whatever you can do to help us, I'm all in, any of you. If you guys see a better way, then please tell me, help me out. But for now, you're going to get a budget from the mayor. You can do what you want with it. But I, when it's done, it has to be balanced. And it's kind of take care, more than just that. It's got to pay the staff. It's got to pay the police department. We have a lot of stuff that's coming out of this budget. This is just one small page. And so we need to just, I understand and we're read on this, but this is kind of where we're at. Yes, sir. Sorry.
Um, so moving to a slightly different topic. So looking at the table, there's three funds that have sufficient money for the eighteen line items. Uh, transportation capital, capital facilities, and sewer capital. So my question is, how much extra are there in those funds, either to consider additional projects or protection against cost overruns?
Say, consider additional, additional projects within that specific fund.
Yeah, let's say we want, the council wanted to add a nineteenth line item. How much would be available? Or is it something we'll be hearing about as the budget process continues?
Yeah, as we get into the budget, what you can see is, um, revenues to expenditures within that budget. So if, if you looked at the surface water capital, surface water capital, for some, some water operations. I don't know. Anyway. It doesn't run itself. They currently, surface water currently has a deficit, just, just to operate it. So I'm just giving you an example.
I, I was referring to the other.
But, but you'll see the same thing in the sewer. You'll see its revenues as expenditures and how much more revenues we have than expenditures. So that all comes out in the detail of, of the budget percentage. So you will have all those details. Go ahead.
But the funds have rules around that. Very specific rules. So each one of your rate carrying funds is the best, most simple way to describe it is your surface water fund is its own business. It cannot support sewer. Those funds have to stand alone on the rate that is being paid for that specific utility break and the capital alone. If you decide, um, and I'm going to use the example for when we did the interfund loan, because we had two grants for the, to purchase the property, and they were reimbursement basis. So we had to pay those funds upfront, and then we've been reimbursed after the fact. We did what we call an interfund loan, borrowing money from the sewer capital fund. But then you have to pay it back with interest. You can never benefit from another fund without paying it back interest. So, um, a lot of what was just said on asking if you can pull to balance, um, that's going to be my overarching answer right there. But most of them have very specific rules around what you can spend that money on. General fund is one of those that is, uh, a little bit freer.
I suppose I was just thinking more like the thirty thousand foot view, that if, if the council will be having a discussion about, you know, these are the priorities for us, then also hearing about where there might be, if it's a very big budget, there might not be many opportunities. But let's say the transportation capital, but happens to have a surplus, and then brainstorming, well, how might we want to use that surplus? So that, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah. And so like if you had a sewer project, you can, like, if you wanted to do, and there's capacity, and I mean, that budget, that we can have a discussion around it, say, get added to the CIP, if something else is going to drop on keeping the work of the same. But yeah, I mean, if, if an individual fund supports another project, and you said transportation capital, there's something that would fit in that, that you want to consider as part of your budget discussion. We can definitely get you the details of how that could be funded within that and what that would, how that would affect, and the bottom line of that, uh, how it would affect maybe its own internal. Yeah, so.
Okay.
That is part of it.
Trying to, trying, one more, one more add, is each, most of these funds have a, a revenue source that has restrictions on them. So that's part of the challenge too, is if you come up with a project, some of them have, like, REIT one has um, a little bit less restriction than a REIT two, which is the, the main source of the capital trans, for the transportation capital. But so there's a lot of rules and regulation around, and I don't want to go too deep, but just keeping the projects in mind and where they come from, and that sometimes, um, that's going to be the catch. There's the rules and regulations around the dollars.
And Larry, we oftentimes look at, kind of like a six year or whatever, we look, we look out on that fund further to see if there's any trends. So we may not want to take that advantage of that if we see some things in the future. If we know there's a big project coming up in four or five years, we just figure it. So we try to also look a little bit more. It's less reliable looking that far out, but we try to then make sure that we're not making decisions now that we regret. It's kind of towards the end of the budget process. That's a really good point, which new council members might not know about, which is the, the six-year projection. So we're adopting a two-year budget, but we also have the opportunity towards the end of this budget process to look at the six-year projection and make any course corrections.
I just wanted to, um, you know, a cou- couple of comments. One, uh, Parks Master Plan, I am very pleased to see, we've talked about this in the past, and very pleased to see this in the mix, because if I recall correctly, we were given a little bit of latitude to use the post-plan in terms of receiving grant funds. And typically, you're not allowed to do that. Um, but we had a little bit of latitude there to be able to use post-plan, but typically, the Parks Master Plan is what helps, uh, define eligibility for various grant pro, uh, programs. Um, and so yeah, because it seems as though, is it Five Acre Woods? I believe it was Five Acre Woods, that they allowed us to use the, the post-plan in lieu of in, in Parks Master Plan, which cities actually have. So I think that's a very positive thing. And, and I just wanted to say one more quick thought about grants. It indicates to me, when I look at these programs and I look at where we need these projects and where we need additional funds, it is going to be very important for us to be out there keeping our eyes and ears open about sources of grant funding for these various projects, because we simply cannot do the things that the community wants us to do and the things that are necessary to keep this community going without finding additional sources of revenue. And uh, I'm pleased that there's some things that are coming down the pipe here for, um, public safety improvements for the roads from the federal government that we are eligible for, some other grant programs that we can be applying for. But again, that's going to come down to, to having enough staff time to actually write the grants, because that, that's very difficult. And it may fall on some of us to, to pitch in there. So. Good for them.
And if I can just sort of add on to the whole business about rules and regulations. So we, as a council, have to understand what, what state law requires us to do, what federal law requires us to do, and that's some, you know, the, the stormwater permit is part of that, for example. And, um, but we also, when we look at funding opportunities, there are regulations for every grant that you write. And there's limitations to, to what you use it for. And they, you know, those people who are evaluating those grants are also looking at some of the, um, the, uh, budgeting, kind of just the, I, numbers that are in there. Are they realistic? Given their experience in funding to these kinds of projects in other cities. So so we're not just sort of operating on our own in a sort of, you know, free environment here. We are very constrained. And um, I think that's something that you, you council members sometimes, that back onto the, the, the wake-up call, but we're just not, we're not just free to do what we want. We, we actually have to pay a lot of attention to all of the other jurisdictions that have, um, control over both money and, um, how we do things and what we do.
Put a finer point on it. When we have gone back to DC on our trips to advocate for the city for various programs, a huge portion of that time has been dedicated specifically to, we're kind of in the middle between, there's funds, there are federal funds available for small cities and federal funds available for larger cities like the city of Shoreline. And we fall kind of in the middle, and we fall through the cracks, and we've had quite a bit of success. Uh, and the pulver here at Lion Creek is, is indicative of that success. But there are other places where it's incredibly challenging. I mean, from the standpoint of public safety projects for sidewalks and, and roads and crosswalks and things like that. And I'm, I'm hugely optimistic that this multi-billion dollar fund that has been created, is that, that is, we're eligible to apply for here in, actually, I think the open period starts here in short order. Um, there, there is, there's some opportunities there for smaller cities like ourselves where we're, we're above ten thousand, but we're below fifty thousand. Strangely enough, they were right in that weird place that they just don't have programs for us at the federal level.
But, one other thing, Larry, um, John Reesha helped me a lot. We need, we used to term color of money. You know, if you're sewer money, you might be red, the water, the surface water is blue. And you start figuring, because like, you'll learn in the budget that everything comes from somewhere and it has to be spent somewhere. And then you get the general fund where everything gets dumped in, and that's the coolest part, but it's pretty ugly money. It's, you know, it's a random color.
Not much.
But the other thing, what I'm going to decode is, you know, things aren't easy. It's not what it is. But I'm very proud of the fact that we've got the auditors aboard every year lately for having the budget, because they come in and every penny, the, the only way you get that award is to just about be a dang perfect budget and, and not just a budget on how the city does at taking care of that money and showing where the money goes. And that's kind of a big deal, because there's not very many cities that keep getting that award. And it's, that's, that's really a pretty amazing deal, because that means the state's saying, you're doing everything right, and you're doing it by the law, and you're not messing up. And that's, that's.
And that probably wasn't always the thing.
No, it was not.
I have a, I have a substance question, and if I may, I don't know if anyone else wants to go. Um, so suppose we want to, at some point, and we get a grant to do, um, put in one or two, uh, electric vehicle charging stations for city vehicle. Um, so I'm thinking of the climate action plan and the fact that this budget goes out to twenty twenty-four. So I assume this doesn't, this two hundred twenty-five year doesn't include something like that. Um, and I assume something like that, we would want to get grant funds for it, because it's a substantial cost. But I'd like to bin that in the wishlist category somewhere, or the future options or something, because if we happen to be able to tap into some money and say twenty twenty-four, I wouldn't want to preclude it. So I, I, I just, uh, that's of all the topics here, I think that that's one that we should have a parking lot or a wishlist or something, whatever you want to call it, like, uh, we will, this is something we'd like to do, but we don't have even a penny to do it right now. But if we pick out a grant, that's something we would definitely want to do.
Oh, could I ask that?
Uh-oh.
Well, I, I've been looking with great interest to fill that, hopefully your house will pass, if not, the federal house will pass, um, this week, next week. Um, and solar is in there at the same time. And so I have a question. Is it possible with material bin covers, when in fact, DNA, the solar panel?
That was exactly what I was going to do. Now they're five hundred thousand, but we're.
And we're going to charge our new electric truck from the bin covers.
Oh, yes.
Our electrical, um, across the city, and maybe even earn its money if we put some of that in grid. So, I mean, I, I do think that some of those kind of creative ideas too, we ought, we ought to just articulate them and get them on the table so that if the opportunity to come up, you, you know, at the start, you know that we're with you on, on going for that kind of, of opportunity and funding.
I, I do think when I, when I was on the board of an environmental foundation that worked with utilities, public, public utilities, not private, but public utilities, part of their program together, partnership together was called Community Solar. And they would find public buildings, whether it was an elementary school or a public building like, like ours, and try to, you know, the utility got kudos for doing it. And there'd be public education associated with it. And there were some, you know, foundation funds that kind of came in. So they were definitely partnerships, but our city is like a really good candidate for something like that. I don't know what the opportunities are. And I don't think Seattle City Light ever participated in those kind of programs. It was more the, you know, PUDs, so.
Council, uh, council member Levo, please.
Oh, thank you. Um, I wanted to come back. I appreciate the discussion about this, uh, CIP. I want to come back to the sewer master plan and the surface water master plan. The, um, the goal of spending this, are, are these to build upon previous, um, utility master plans? Or are these intended to be, uh, updates or are completely new? I'm just curious about um, how, I assume there are previous master plans. Uh, but maybe that's a question that I'm not familiar with, Director Parago.
Yeah, my understanding is that some of these plans are, previous master plans are from twenty years ago or more. Um, so we really are probably starting from uh, really low point of, of trying to figure this out. So, um, it probably would be a, a pretty wholesale master plan that we need to look at with, again, with, with all the new assets that we, we have.
Okay. The other question is, um, there's been a mention of a six-year, uh, CIP program. And so how does this budget request or this, this, um, CIP plan align with the six-year plan?
Well, I, I, again, I go back to the master plans that we're working on right now. That would be a guiding light for the next six years, if not more.
No, no, I mean, um, there's already a six-year plan. And so my question is, how does this align with our current six-year plan?
Oh, wow. There, this is the last year of the previous six-year plan. There is no six-year plan going forward at this point.
So, so there's, there's good alignment between, um, what's being thought of as the, uh, CIP program here as, as compared to what's in the six-year plan.
I'm sorry, say it again.
So this, what I'm trying to understand is how this aligns with the six-year plan that we've, we've previously, um, adopted.
Well, the previous six-year plan was from twenty seventeen.
Your budget protection.
Uh, I mean, we had a plan, and we wanted to do certain projects over six years. And my question is, how does that align with what this?
This is, it's a prediction, not a plan.
Yeah. And oftentimes, after the first couple of years, it, it gets very fuzzy. So it's not, it's not as hard and set in stone as we would like. But we do sometimes look at, you know, what our expenditures are on these, like, in, in the data sheet, the detail sheet, there is the full six-year.
Sure.
But we just know much more after the two years.
I understand that. So do plans do get fuzzy? But I was just curious about how they align. You know, is this anything like what was in the six-year plan? Or is, there is this, you know, this is actually what we thought we were going to do when the six-year plan was adopted.
No, because we, once we get a couple of years out, the plan is like five percent maybe worth, you know, known, and we know that there's just going to be new projects that will fill that. So we don't generally have a full slate of projects that take us all six years, right?
Yeah, I'm absolutely.
I I remember it just, you know, the volume gets lower as we get further out. Well, and it projects the revenues also, that part, yeah.
I wonder, maybe something, there there's two ways to think about a six-year plan. One is like we have like twenty seventeen through twenty-two, twenty-three through twenty-eight, and they're very distinct. And the others, we have a sliding one where every two years, we just add two years to the debt.
It's a slide, it's a slide.
And so, so we do, so there's a sliding six-year.
Yeah, and it's done when we're mostly through this process, so that it can reflect on this process. But then the outshares are our best guess, and and often not fully. Actual capacity, right, we generally don't have a knowledge that far ahead of what our projects will be. To fully utilize the fund that that five and six-year are.
And if I could add to that too, generally, we don't know what project's gonna be six years out, because a lot of the projects that we that we do. Are in response to new regulations that come to us at some state federal level. So we don't know what those are gonna be six years ahead, so you know, the N P D S, I'm not sure we knew that. When we first put together the six-year plan six years ago, so it's that that sort of thing changes, John, that's why you can't have a hard thought.
No, I I understand what plans are, but um none, none of this, other than the material N P D S. I mean, uh unless you want to consider some of these um covert projects within that, and and that's fine. So I I am, I am familiar with long-range capital planning and capital programs. Uh, what I was, and and I appreciate the discussion is to understand uh the city's approach to.
Buddy, Lindsay's looking at something. Okay, that's fine. Um, any other questions for?
Thank you very much, Jeff.
Now you guys remember, this is just the beginning.
Yeah, that is a very good start, thanks.
Yes, when it all comes together at the end, and you kind of start seeing how all the pieces and where everything comes to, it really kind of actually comes into focus, but it's never gonna be perfect. But we're, what we have to do, this is the way it goes, and it's, believe me, it's a lot better than used to be. I I hope it, Julian, it probably do. Well, then we're gonna have. Already changing the robe. Oh, yeah, folks, anybody else, anything, that will move upstairs, uh seven thirty, we start.